Let's call the meeting to order. With us, we have Mr. Ryan Showalter. Can you state your position, where you're from?
Absolutely. Thank you, President Dodd, members of the council. My name is Ryan Showalter. I'm a land use and real estate attorney with McAllister, Ditar, Showalter &amp; Walker, a law firm based in Easton. And I have, I've had the opportunity to work with Councilman McCain on a number of utility scale solar projects throughout the Delmarva Peninsula over the last several years. I understand the county has had dialogue about solar and solar regulations. And Mr. McCain asked me to appear before you today and share a portion of a presentation that I made along with a few others to an agricultural and environmental law conference that was hosted by the University of Maryland's Ag Law Education Initiative last fall. So I'm more than happy to be interrupted and take questions or run through a presentation. I'm not here to advocate for any particular position necessarily. Mr. McCain asked me to just provide some general background information to you about utility scale solar in the state of Maryland and the role of state and local governments under the current regulatory structure. I've provided you with hard copies, and I may skip over a couple of these slides and move through it fairly quickly, but happy to pause for any questions. The first thing that's important to understand is that Maryland has a regulatory scheme called the Renewable Energy Portfolio Standard, or RPS. This is a statutory requirement enacted by the General Assembly that requires Maryland electric utilities to either obtain a certain percentage of their power from renewable sources or to buy tradable renewable energy credits to essentially offset the use of non-renewable power. The General Assembly requires by 2030 that 14.5% of the power in Maryland comes from solar sources. This structure was created by the state government to help incentivize the development of renewable energy. And I have two slides that look at a quick sort of back-of-the-envelope calculation of what that means from an acreage perspective. If you look at the top line, Maryland is projected to use 54,500,000 megawatts of electricity in 2030. In order for 14.5% of that to come from solar, we need about 7.9 million megawatt-hours of generation from solar. The solar existing in the state of Maryland today is about 1.1 million megawatt-hours. If you assume 100% of the new solar to be used in the state of Maryland will come from ground-mounted, not rooftops. Skip all the way down to the bottom, we need about 38,000 acres of new land-based solar. Now, obviously, there are significant opportunities for rooftop solar, and that will continue to be developed, more so on the western shore where there are more rooftops than over here. If you look at the next slide, this assumes that 60% of the solar required by the state law by 2030 would come from land-based solar. And while it's important and useful to use rooftops to generate solar energy, it's much less efficient from a land base to deal, if you imagine, a Target or a Walmart or a manufacturing facility. There's rooftop equipment, there's ventilation shafts, and so it's not an entire rooftop that can be covered by solar. If you assume 60% of Maryland's solar will be generated from land-based development, Maryland still needs 22,660 acres of new solar development over the next 10 years to meet that General Assembly requirement. So Maryland's regulatory scheme has an agency called the Public Service Commission, which is charged with reviewing and approving all significant new electric generation. So they review new power plants, and they review solar facilities, among other types of generation. The Public Service Commission's new generation permitting is informed by a group that is organized under the Department of Natural Resources called the Power Plant Research Program, or PPRP. And PPRP is comprised of both state employees and third-party consultants, and their job is to consolidate state and local agency comments to do environmental and impact analysis on all new generating projects and to make formal recommendations to the Public Service Commission on all generation projects that appear before the PSC. PPRP has an online tool that is useful for local governments and solar developers, and it has a series of data sets that provide information on constraints for the development of solar, things like the location of mapped prime farmland or prime ag soils throughout the state, location of Maryland Ag Land Preservation Foundation easements and other state easements that would not permit solar, zoning restrictions. Some jurisdictions have no limitations on solar, some have very restrictive limitations on solar. This is, I find this tool to be informative but not entirely reliable. So it gives you a good general idea of where solar may be possible, but it's not as granular as one might hope. And for example, this is a close-up of the PPRP online tool, looking at Kent Island. Queen Anne's County has enacted an overlay zoning district that permits large-scale solar within a two-mile radius of the major north-south transmission line on Route 301. If you look at Kent Island and Route 301 going up through Queen Anne's County, this doesn't identify that overlay district or have the zoning correct. The other thing this tool does for information is it provides a general list of the pending and approved large-scale solar projects in the state. I find this also to be incomplete, so it's informative but not entirely reliable. Utility scale solar projects range from 2 to 3 megawatts at the small end, so that would be something that would take up 15 to 20 acres of land. The largest approved in the state to date is a project in Caroline County called Cherrywood, and that's a 200-megawatt project proposed on about 1,000 acres in Caroline County. The project went through both the local zoning process and also the Public Service Commission review process. Maryland has been approving utility scale solar since about 2014, and so you can see that there were two projects, relatively small, approved in both 2014 and 2015, nine projects approved in 2016, four projects approved, one project denied in 2017, eight projects approved in 2018, and the most recent slide that I have is 2019, which had four approved through late October, one of them being the 200-megawatt project in Caroline. So the state approval process for any solar larger than 2 megawatts, which is about 16 acres of panels, is that it requires a certificate of public convenience and necessity from the Public Service Commission. That process involves filing of an application with notice to the local governments, both county and municipalities that might be involved. It triggers review by the Power Plant Research Program, so they do extensive coordination with the state agencies, they do site visits, and include local planning staff and local government representatives. They hold at least one public hearing in the jurisdiction where the project is to be held. They hold evidentiary hearings at the Public Service Commission offices. And then an administrative law judge issues a proposed order, either approving or denying the project. And that proposed order typically is accompanied by a fairly extensive report from the Power Plant Research Program, in which they propose conditions on the approval. So a lot of times, the PPRP report, and it may, you know, be 10 to 15 or 20 pages and include 20 or 30 or 40 conditions of approval, the proposed order is published for members of the public, local governments, and aggrieved parties to comment on, and then a final order is issued. The final order is appealable to the courts, and then after that, in order to construct a project, the applicant has to demonstrate to the Public Service Commission that they complied with and satisfied the CPCN conditions. A decision by the Maryland Court of Appeals was released last summer, last July, in a case captioned as "The Board of County Commissioners of Washington County versus Perennial Solar." There has been significant debate in the state of Maryland over the last five years or so about what authority local governments actually have with respect to projects that require a CPCN, or Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity. The Maryland Court of Appeals, which as you know is our highest court in the state, issued a decision that held that the Public Service Commission's approval of a CPCN preempts local zoning and land use requirements with respect to the siting of a solar facility. And so what that means under state law is that if the Public Service Commission grants a CPCN approval, that preempts or overrides local government's authority with respect to siting decisions. Now, I'll note that some of these slides, these slides are from a presentation that was provided by myself, Les Knapp of Mako, and Sandra McLemore, who is an Assistant Attorney General with the Power Plant Research Program. Some of these slides have different contributors' perspectives. So this is a slide that came from Mako, and, you know, Mako's perspective on this case is that the holding is very narrow, and it does not eliminate the role of local government in the CPCN process. I tend to agree with that. The case does not affect the Public Service Commission's decision-making process, and one thing that's very important under state law is the, the General Assembly several years ago revised the law to require the Public Service Commission to make CPCN, or Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity decisions only after they give, quote-unquote, "due consideration" to a number of things, three of which are most important for today's discussion. One is the recommendation of the governing body where the project is proposed. So if it was a project in your county, the Public Service Commission has to give due consideration to the county council's recommendation or perspective. The second is that the Public Service Commission has to consider impacts of the proposed project on the stability and reliability of the electric system, on local economics, local aesthetics, impacts on historic sites, impacts on aviation, and impacts on the environment. And they're guided principally by the Power Plant Research Program in evaluating those considerations. And then the third is that the Public Service Commission has to give due consideration of the project's consistency with the comprehensive plan and zoning of the local jurisdiction and of the project developer's efforts to address the concerns of the county or the town in which the project is proposed. So it doesn't require the Public Service Commission to implement local zoning, it doesn't require them to defer to local zoning, doesn't even require them to accept or follow local zoning, but it does require that they give due consideration to the local government perspective and your comprehensive plan and your zoning.
How do they implement the term "due consideration"? How is that, how is that implemented in reality?
It's a good question, and it varies, it varies by project. And frankly, I think it varies based upon the politics of a particular project. So there have been at least two projects in the state where the local government was opposed to the project, citizens were opposed to the project, and they had either provisions in their comprehensive plan or zoning that addressed where they want solar or where they didn't want solar. One of them in Kent County was a wind project, not a solar project, and the Public Service Commission denied the project, in part based on the inconsistencies with the local perspectives.
Okay. It was a wind project that became a solar project, and then that was rejected too, right?
That's right. The way they typically implement it is that even though there is now, under the perennial decision, preemption, what we do on all of our projects is we apply for the local government approvals and the CPCN at the same time, and try to track those processes. So that, in an ideal world, if the project is sited in a location where the jurisdiction is supportive of it from an economic perspective, it moves through the special exception or site plan process the same time it's going through the PSC's review, and then the Power Plant Research Program can point to, you know, the Dorchester County Special Exception Approval as demonstration that it's consistent with the local zoning. If there is no local zoning, or if there's an objection, you don't have that alignment, so it's more challenging for them to deal with.
Okay.
The, so we see a wide range of zoning approaches with respect to solar in the state right now. Talbot County has adopted a cap, and it's slightly under 800 acres, and essentially said, "We want to see no more than 800 acres of utility scale solar in our county," and when you hit that cap, that's the end of it.
And Ryan, doesn't Caroline also have one, doesn't it like 25 acres, I think, or something?
Caroline County has a cap of 2,000 acres right now. Queen Anne's County does not have a cap on the number of acres that could be developed as solar, but they've adopted essentially a two-mile swath on each side of the transmission corridor, and so they've limited it to lands within that two-mile overlay district. And a number of jurisdictions have adopted a personal property tax on electric generating property. And so they've adopted a tax on generating equipment, and then Queen Anne's County, for example, has said that they will grant a payment in lieu of taxes or a pilot agreement for the first 3,000 acres of solar generating projects that are approved, and after that, there's not a cap on the number of acres of solar, but you have to pay the full freight of the tax, which probably means the projects aren't cost-effective.
Okay. Hey, Ryan, can I ask you a quick question regarding the personal property tax?
Absolutely.
So that's not automatic, doesn't, the county actually has to adopt personal property tax on solar generating equipment?
So most counties that have done this, Mr. McCain, have adopted a tax on electric generating equipment, so not only solar, but they apply to coal and gas and wind as well. Most jurisdictions only have solar generating facilities right now, and they use that tax as a way to help steer projects. So they grant pilots for projects that they want to see and projects that work through their process, and invite others to pay the full freight if they can make their project economically viable.
Ryan, can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes, sir.
My name is Bob Taylor, I'm the council's attorney. It wasn't the reason that Kent County, and I think it was Queen Anne's, adopted their particular tax was because they didn't have originally any personal property tax. So to tax solar generating infrastructure, they had to pass something.
That's correct.
Whereas counties that already have, and across the board, personal property tax, don't have to do that.
That is correct.
Yes, and I think we're in the latter category here.
That's right. And there is a, there's specific authority under the state law for pilots relating to electric generating.
Enabling legislation.
That's correct.
Yeah, and so we already have that, too.
That's right.
Yeah.
So there's been a lot of discussion about the county's role in the CPCN process. The state offers to hold a joint public hearing with the county or municipal government. It's not something the county's required to do, but in most projects, we find that the county government elects to hold a joint hearing, so one or more commissioners will sit at the table with the administrative law judge, participate in the hearing. The county has the opportunity to participate as a party in the CPCN docket before the Public Service Commission. So in many cases, counties file a motion to intervene and participate as a party, they receive copies of all of the pleadings and evidence that's filed in the case, and have the opportunity to weigh in and share their perspective with the Public Service Commission directly. And then the third way that the county plays a role in that process is through informal participation in the meetings. They participate in site visits, they participate with the Public Service Commission to share the county's positions or perspectives. The slides have a couple of examples of projects that you can look at at your leisure that just illustrate the size and scope of a number of these projects. This is a difficult balancing act for everybody involved in this process, and I typically represent either solar developers or large agricultural landowners who are negotiating leases with solar developers. Solar presents a very unique opportunity for agricultural landowners to monetize their holdings. It's not a panacea, it is not going to overtake agriculture. We need a lot of additional acres to meet the state mandate, but a very small percentage of the total land that's in agricultural production to meet that mandate. I have a number of clients who find a great opportunity with solar to take their least productive ag land, whether it's un-irrigated and dry, or whether it's some of their wetter land and less productive land, and put it into potential solar leasing to generate additional revenue. The solar developer has a challenge to balance landowner considerations, state and local perspectives, including zoning, local community perspectives, aesthetics is a real driver on these projects, and we find that projects that are well-sited and located behind forest vegetation, nobody can see, everybody's happy to have. The county's happy to have the tax revenue, and neighbors have no objection to. And a solar project proposed adjacent to houses and immediately visible from people's backyards generates a very different reaction for obvious reasons.
When you're talking about engaging solar as far as how to zone it, either through megawatts or the amount of land it's used, you know, as technology moves forward, won't these solar panels be more efficient, and there'd be more megawatts being concentrated into a smaller area?
Absolutely. I don't think there's any jurisdiction in Maryland that restricts the amount of generation, the number of megawatts. So it's all of the regulations I've seen regarding location or scope either deal with a geographic limitation, you know, a certain distance from transmission, or a total number of acres, but they don't impose a cap on generation. And solar panels right now have a lifespan of 20 to 30 years. You know, certainly within the first five or seven years, we're probably not likely to see sufficient technology development to warrant the cost of replacing the panels, but, you know, technology changes quickly. So if we get to a point in five or seven or 10 years where the additional power that could be generated offsets the cost of recycling or replacing panels, I expect that we'll see new technology deployed.
Or you were putting in new ones, is what I meant.
Absolutely. And so, as I noted, the zoning approvals in most jurisdictions are either considerations that are permitted by right, subject to site plan review, or projects that are permitted by special exception or conditional use exception. In most cases, they require site plan approval, and aesthetic and screening considerations are often the most significant topics for local governments and the general public. This is an example of a project in Queen Anne's County called Jones Farm Solar. This project, I don't have, my pointer works, this project is surrounded by trees with the exception of the very northern limit, there's a small section of a couple hundred feet along Flanco Road, and the southeastern portion of the project also had about a 300 or 400-foot segment along the public road. The rest of it was surrounded by woods, and so it proposed a buffer approximately 50 feet in width with a combination of evergreen trees and shrubs and some pollinator plantings. It was approved with virtually no public engagement or opposition, and progressed very quickly. This is a project in northern Queen Anne's County called Bluegrass Solar, and it has lots of frontage on open and exposed public roads. They're not significant areas of residential development in the vicinity, but it's still very visible from the public road. And so I provided just a couple of slides for your reference on the nature of screening that counties are requiring. This is, this is an existing conditions view of the site from a public road. This next slide is an image of the proposed project with the size of landscaping proposed at planting. So it's a combination of overstory trees, understory trees, evergreens and shrubs, and a landscape buffer approximately 50 feet in width. And then this is a visualization of that same buffer two years after planting, and then last, this is five years after planting. So there's not a way to screen projects of this size and scope from view immediately. Anyone who suggests that you can is kidding themselves. But with modest amount of planting and a couple of years of growth, I think you can find very effective screening that will address a lot of the aesthetic concerns. I addressed the pilot briefly. Solar generating equipment is subject to a 50% exemption from the personal property tax, and it depreciates over a 30-year schedule with a 25% floor. So if a project has $10 million worth of personal property associated with it on day one, $5 million of that is taxable, and that depreciates at 3.3% until it hits 25% of the total value. What we often see with pilots in most jurisdictions is either an adjustment of the rate so that the amount of taxes that are paid are leveled over the term of the project. Normally, under the depreciation schedule, the tax rate would be, or the tax bill would be highest the first year of the project, and as the personal property depreciates, the tax revenue would decrease. It's most difficult for projects to bear that large tax burden in the first couple of years after construction, and of course, county government needs, fiscal needs, are going to increase with time. So in many cases, we either adjust the total amount to be paid over the pilot so that it's a level payment, or in many cases, we actually reverse the payment schedule so that the lowest payments are due in the early years of the project, and that payments increase each year over the life of the project to make it easier for the project to carry the finance of those costs, and also better for the local government to receive more tax revenue later when your costs are expected to be higher. There's still a lot of movement in the state, and maybe less clarity because of COVID-related interruptions, but there's a governor's task force on evaluating the siting of clean and renewable energy projects. There's certainly a recognition that brownfields and developed lands and parking lots play a significant role, but there's no way we'll get close to meeting that 14.5% goal in the next 10 years using only those developed lands. So this task force is charged with trying to prioritize the use of non-developed lands to meet the state's goals. There are also work groups, both under the House of Delegates and the Senate, and then a statewide joint land use committee looking at siting of alternative energy projects. So it's a dynamic field, there's a lot that's changing. It seems like every month or two, there's a local jurisdiction that is doing something slightly different, so it's a challenging field to stay on top of. But I appreciate the opportunity to provide you with an update, and, Mr. McCain, I don't know whether I've accomplished your objectives, but I'm happy to address any questions. So do we have any comments, questions?
Yeah, I think a lot like Ms. Porter, it was here earlier about the DA, you know, this is here to educate us, so, yeah, I think that's very well done.
I guess, I guess your one statement about it's still a moving target with the state, how much of a rush do you think it would be for us to be into the zoning issue on this? That's my understanding, there's not a lot of high attention power lines that fits the solar, the large solar fields in Waukesha County, so I'm wondering, should we wait and see where the state's headed on this, or is it something we should rush into?
Well, so I'm not, I'm not here to advocate any particular position, and I have some clients who would say, you know, we would be happy if you not have any, you know, zoning regulations. I have others who say, "We're interested in predictability." We don't- We don't care what your rules are, just tell us what they are, and we'll play by them if the project makes sense. So I'm not opposed to regulations, and frankly, having more clarity upfront that's reliable and applied consistently is better for everybody, better for the public and better for the developers. My understanding is consistent with yours, that there's not as much transmission capacity in Wycomico County, which is why I think you have not seen as much pressure as other jurisdictions. And one of the most expensive components of any project is connecting that project to the grid and getting the power onto the grid. And what you're selling is electrons, and electrons are fungible. So they, you know, the power that's generated, if there was a project a mile from Mr. McCain's house, when he turns on his TV, he's probably not, or maybe not, using electrons generated down the street. You know, they may be electrons generated somewhere else. But everything that goes into the grid is metered, and everything that comes out of the grid is metered. So having solar distributed throughout the state helps enhance the reliability of the grid as a whole by distributing that generation, so we're not relying on one pipeline from Calver Cliffs or from another power plant to get energy to the shore. But having said that, unless projects are located in very close proximity, and generally that's more like, you know, a quarter mile or less from transmission lines, it's not cost-effective to build new transmission connections. And so what you're seeing Queen Anne's County's two-mile radius, that's about the extent of what's economically viable to build anyway. Even if there's capacity on the line, it costs so much to get the power from four miles away that you can't see those projects constructed. So I don't think there's as much pressure here because of that. I do think there is value in predictability and clarity.
I can add a little bit to that. We've had two projects approved here by the PSC. The first one, EGRAT, was approved in 2015 out by Hebron, right off 11 to Sheil Road, and that ties into the Rockawalk and Substation for Chop Tank, which is about a quarter mile away. The other one, which was approved three years ago, Brick Hill, out by the landfill, that's not been developed. And my understanding, I don't know this for a fact, but I got it from a pretty good source, is it's because of the tie-in cost, and they just, it just was not feasible, I guess, for whoever they were dealing with.
So there have been two challenges, and Brick Hill may have had significant interconnection in cost. The other challenge that has stymied development, although not permitting over the last three or four years, is that the Renewable Portfolio Standard, the RPS, which sets the threshold on how much solar we need in the state, it was set on an increasing schedule over time. And you may recall, a couple of years ago, the General Assembly bumped that standard up a little bit higher. Governor Hogan vetoed it and said that this will cost Maryland consumers, Maryland electric purchasers, more, and he vetoed that law. When he did, solar developers were developing and planning for projects on the basis of this ever-increasing standard. It was vetoed, and all of a sudden, there was more solar generation than need for credit purchases from utility suppliers. And so, for example, I have a small solar installation in my backyard. Before the veto, we were getting about $150 a month in SREC sales. After that law was vetoed, my SREC revenue dropped to about $950 a month. And so you can imagine, if somebody had budgeted a project, Brick Hill, and I think was 30 or 40.
36 acres, five.
It was about five megawatts. So, you know, they were anticipating many multiples of my $150 a month, and then saw that cut by 90 or 95%. That is one revenue stream in the financial model that caused almost all solar construction in the state to freeze for several years. Within the last year, the General Assembly and our governor got aligned, and they did adopt this increased standard to 14.5% by 2030, and that's pushed the SREC market back up into the mid $70 or $80 range, and we're seeing a lot of projects that had been approved now starting to move to construction because the economics have improved.
And to address your question a little bit about, you know, Ryan mentioned, like, in our county, we haven't had a whole lot of people seeking out these large-scale projects, but the other side of that is also because of our fragmentation. You know, we're the most populous county on Del Marva, so, you know, we have a lot of our farms have been divided over the years, so, you know, it's hard to find that uninterrupted, particularly for large scales, you know, four or 500 acre clear tract of land, and also that's isolated, you know, doesn't have a development or something nearby or around it. But I think we are the only, and Ryan, you can correct me on this, but I think every county on Del Marva has now instituted some, something in their zoning code relative to solar, except for Wycomico, and I'm not sure about Worcester.
I'm not sure about Worcester either, but I think that is otherwise correct.
Yeah. But they didn't have it, just, like, none of these had it three or four years ago.
That's right. I think Somerset County, within the last 10 or 12 months, adopted a new significant revision that added comprehensive solar regulations. I think they were the most recent.
Yeah, I've seen some smaller areas where people are putting solar panels up. One is, I mean, your district, Joe, and I can't say how many are there, but it's fenced in. What kind of guidelines do they go by? Is there any regulations, or can anybody just put up these solar panels?
So I've been involved in a couple of smaller projects here in the county, and they've required a special exception under, you know, it's an energy use, a public utility use, and a site plan approval. And they've been relatively straightforward.
Who did that go through, the Public Service Commission?
No, only the county level, County Planning Commission, County Board of Appeals.
I'm not aware of that.
Ryan, can I add on that? Because I checked with the people at P&amp;Z on this. I think if it's, if they consider it an accessory use to the property, for example, a landowner wants to put up something that essentially serves him, they don't require a special exception for that. There is at least one Breuer House installation I'm aware of, and I asked about that, and they said they considered that accessory, and so they didn't require a special exception. That's just, you know, what they told me. I wasn't involved in them.
And that's true whether it's residential or agricultural or industrial. So if it is, if it's installed to address the load generated by the principal use on the property, this county, like most counties, considers it incidental and accessory to that principal use, and it's a building permit. The project that I was referring to is a small standalone generating project. It has a small battery storage component, so it, in addition to generating power that goes to the grid, it charges batteries during the day and can release power at night. And because that was just generating power, it required a separate.
The one I saw had like a dozen panels, and it's at a church, it's not at a.
Yeah, so that would have been an accessory approval, just a building permit for that.
Now, should there be any guidelines for safety, since it's electricity, other than a fence?
These projects are governed by the electric code of the county anyway, so I don't, we don't typically see separate safety requirements in county zoning. There's often a requirement that there be a sign posted at each gate that provides contact information for the owner and the operator in the case of an emergency. Fire departments regularly get contact information, have shut-off information so that if there was a grass wildfire, for example, they could kill power to the project. But generally, the electric code covers the safety considerations.
Mr. Holloway?
So you had a commercial building that was on 400 acres of land that used a large amount of electricity. They could put 400 acres of solar panels on as an accessory? Is that what you're saying?
Well, so I think that typically the definition, and I can't quote you exactly your definition, but most jurisdictions define an accessory use as a use that is incidental or subordinate to the principal use, customarily found in connection with that use, and located on the same parcel. So I think it would come down to a question of what their load is or what their energy consumption is. If it was a wastewater treatment plant, or a significant welding operation that really required a lot of power, you know, I think up to whatever the load is they could generate, I'd be very surprised if you have industrial facilities that would require 50 megawatts of power. So I think that's extreme.
I'm just thinking of, you know, there's somebody's always looking for a loophole.
Right. They'd have to generate a lot of electrical demand to sustain a size of a project like that.
That would also require a CPCN probably, too. There are some exceptions, but I don't think it would qualify.
Generally, a CPCN is required for projects that exceed 2 megawatts, but if you're using the power on-site, there's a CPCN exemption.
Well, a certain limit, there's a limit.
That's right, there is a limit.
Mr. Hastings?
Yeah, so I guess the question in my mind is, you know, what do we, what does a local process look like for Wycomico County for us? I don't doubt for a second that the Renewable Portfolio Standard is going to continue to increase. You know, there's going to be a new governor, that's not, you know, we're going to have, that's going to have to continue to increase. A couple of years ago, I was a part of, I tried to participate in a study in actually looking at one of the values, what, you know, does it, could an individual, could a farmer make more money by having solar than they could, say, doing grain, and to what degree? And we found that it was close to a 20% or 20 times the amount that they could get off of any kind of cash grain, you know, you could then do. Of course, there's difference, you know, there's setup costs, or there's other kinds of costs that are associated with, but nonetheless, 20 times more amount of money. So in my mind, there's the two groups that I think are, that I've witnessed when I've worked across other counties. You know, you've got a lot of agricultural folks who do not want to see a drop in the number of production acres in a given area, because that then raises the cost for everyone, the neighboring farms and others. And the second group is the, you know, the solar sprawl. If that goes into places like Hebron or other tier-two, tier-three for sustainable growth act, kind of, you know, areas where they're planned for growth, could we then lose out into an area where we were going to build houses, where we're going to put out water and sewer, and be getting a lot more money in tax revenue by putting out homes in a place like, you know, a place like where Mr. Holloway's from, or, you know, or Hebron, or in our county, or others? So I guess in my mind, I'm kind of wondering, what does that really look like, and how are we different than other areas? We may not have the grid capacity at the moment, but we also have these other factors of wind energy, you know, one county over, and I don't really know what that looks like for the future of transmission lines here on the Lower Shore, but one way or another, we are, as a society, moving towards the direction of renewable energy, and that's not going to stop. I think I'd love to see a process for us to try to come up with something that was significant, where we could clearly say, just like every other county on the shore, except for maybe Worcester, to really kind of map out, hey, here's where we probably don't want to see things, here's where we probably do things, want to see things. And I'd love to see what that process looks like for all of us. So that's more of a question, I think, for all of us. I don't know how we think that through, but there's a lot of folks who have been a part of this and who have helped come up with a good product that respects the, you know, the rural heritage of our area, but also gives it as an ability to, you know, to maintain what we do have well. So I'd like to be able to see us move forward in that way.
Okay. We're going to have to wrap this up. We've been into it for 45 minutes. Do we have any more questions?
Add one, just one real quick one, yes.
With your experience, like, in the rural areas in particular, do you see any possible trend towards a marriage between the solar panels and the poultry industries, where you see that you have so many poultry houses? It almost seemed like putting solar panels on the houses may be the best benefit to everyone. Are you seeing any type of trend towards that?
To be honest, that, there's such little legal work involved in that, because it's considered as an accessory structure, it just requires a building permit. I am seeing solar deployment on poultry houses, but not, I'm not typically involved in that. And, you know, there's a lot of poultry on the eastern shore, but there's nowhere near, you know, 23,000 acres of poultry rooftops. So it's something that's beneficial for individual farmers, but I wouldn't call it a trend that will make a meaningful difference in the generation.
The problem with that is, is with the existing poultry houses, a lot of them are truss houses, and the trusses probably weren't built to withstand the weight. Now, newer houses, they could be engineered to hold the weight of that, but some of the existing houses, it would be tough for them to put that additional weight on top of the, you know. That would be great if they could, but.
Any more questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. John.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Now, for the council, how do we want to approach this? Are we considering legislation like Toppet County or another county?
I think it's interesting, what Mr. Showalter said was that companies that might be coming here, they want to know what the playing field is. I think it's important for us to establish that to a certain degree, and of course, as technology improves, we could make our adjustments as well, but comprehensive plan, you know, looking at the possibility of the, what is it, PPB?
PPRP. Okay, the personal property. Oh, the pilot, pilot payment and little taxes for the personal property tax?
Yeah, the personal property tax leads to the pilot program. Yeah, I think that would benefit towards whatever zoning issues may be important.
So you'd like to have another work session on this?
I think we set it up with our plan and zoning in Keith Hall and get them in here to talk about it.
Okay.
That'd be a pretty good idea, see, let the plan and zoning maybe take some initiative.
Because the other good thing is, you know, we're not, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. There's seven or eight other counties out here, right here on the shore, that have done this, you know, we can kind of pick and choose what looks the best and what works for us.
Maybe even have somebody from the industry, you know, solar industry come in.
I think Laura distributed there's going to be a webinar in early October by the industry on siting in Maryland, so that would be worth watching, I think.
All right, we'll work on this in the future. Thank you, Mr. Showalter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, can we take a look at two-minute recess so we can just flip out the laptops?
Yes, take a couple minutes so PAC 14 can get set up. Thank you again, Mr. Showalter.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. With us, we have the superintendent and some members of the Board of Education to discuss reopening Wycomico County public schools, so if you would state your name and your position.
Sure, Donna Hanlon, Superintendent of Schools.
You can bring the mask down if you like.
Okay, okay.
It can hear you better.
Gene Malone, Vice Chairman of the Board of Education.
And on our Zoom call, I believe that we have other members of the Board of Education, Don Fitzgerald, Chairman of the Board. I think Mrs. Sefowski is with us by phone. Mr. Palmer is with us, Mrs. Laird Lewis, I'm not doing this in any particular order, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Murray.
And Mr. Murray.
Mr. Murray.
Thank you. So hopefully, they are all with us. We also have with us virtually Dr. Rick Briggs, who's Chief Academic Officer, Mrs. Kim Miles, Assistant Superintendent for Student and Family Services, and Dr. Mike Astoffer, who is Business and Operations.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. So I'm very, very pleased to have this opportunity to come before you as a council and the community who are viewing through PAC 14 to share our recovery plan for the opening of schools for the fall of 2020. This plan has been finalized, but we do consider it a working document as we tweak things as we move along. It's been translated and it is posted on our website. It was posted on Friday afternoon. The plan is the result of many, many, many hundreds of hours of research and dialogue and collaboration with medical and educational experts, and we believe is a great plan. It's 40 pages plus long, so there's a lot of detail involved. And today, for the benefit of the council and for the community, I just want to walk through some of the major areas of the plan and highlight some of the important details so that everyone knows what to expect in the fall. And then I'll take you in the end, very briefly, to where the plan is posted, the plan itself, and how it's organized.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So generally, the plan does a number of things. Most importantly, it provides a resource for our families and the community, and it's designed to be very user-friendly with parents in mind as the audience for viewing and becoming familiar with the plan. It was developed in collaboration with three different stakeholder groups, on which there were individuals who represented parents, teachers, administrators, the community, the health department, and the medical profession. And these groups utilized many different resources, but most especially the Maryland Together Recovery Plan for Education. That's MSDE's recovery plan and guidance that contains within it 13 non-negotiables that local school systems needed to include in their plans. So that was very much a part of what those stakeholder groups were considering as they worked over a number of weeks. The plan reflects the unanimous The plan reflects the unanimous decision of the Board to begin in a virtual modality, and the rationale behind that decision, and then moves into the details of recovery and instruction, student and family services, business and operations, communication, and then finally, the future of our pathway to recovery. And finally, the plan embodies our guiding philosophy in the school system for all students by describing how we will ensure that students, all students, have the necessary opportunities and resources in order to be successful. Next slide, please. So, we begin, and I apologize, you can't see this very well, but these were two slides taken from the July the 28th special meeting of the Board, during which the Board voted unanimously to go virtual. But first of all, the decision to begin on the 8th, but then shortly after, thereafter, part of that decision is that on or before October the 1st, we will begin to transition small groups of students based upon need into our buildings, with the hopes of transitioning more and more students into our buildings safely as we can do so. We came to the conclusion, that conclusion, understanding that no decision is going to make everyone happy, but with our two priorities of student learning and student and staff safety at the heart of that decision-making. With so many unknowns about the virus and increases in cases locally, we sided with caution, knowing that we, if we could focus all of our attention on a totally remote virtual program, that we could have the most success, considering consistency for our students. Many of you may be familiar, if you've watched any of the news, that a lot of school systems who are going back have been open for a day or maybe two, and then have shut down again based upon cases. And so, we believe, and I said this before that was even happening, we believe that it's really, really important to have consistency for our students. So, and I'll, I'll make one more point again before I move off of this slide. It is important to remember that while we announced that it's for the first semester, that's what we hope to be the worst-case scenario. We all want our children back in school, there is no question. But, we will do so when it's safe to do that. And we're watching, we're hoping, actually, our superintendent's group has asked the State Health Department to come up with metrics for school systems. We are educators, we are not physicians, we are not medical experts. So, we are awaiting that guidance, and in the meanwhile, we will follow our plan as it's, as it is written. Next slide, please. So, again, you can't see this, but this is taken from the plan, and, and I'll just tell you generally what it says, and then hopefully you will, if you've not already, go to the plan to see this particular slide, because this slide emphasizes, and the next comments that I will make emphasizes that what parents and students will experience in the fall is not what was experienced in the spring. We were required to pivot very quickly in the spring. We had very little synchronous live teacher instruction in the spring. A lot, a lot will be different, and I'll tell you about that as I go through. So the plan, the instructional part of the plan begins with this summary set of expectations, and in the first block, you see what we are committed to as a school system, and that's working with our state and our local leaders to provide a very strong educational program for all students, whether it be in-person or virtual in a safe environment. And we have been, and we will continue to support our staff through needed professional development. In the teacher area, teachers will connect with students every day through live and recorded teacher-led instruction. There will be regular, ongoing, daily feedback on students' work, and students and parents will be able to connect and talk with teachers through email, phone calls, and virtual meetings with teachers throughout the school day. And then there will be other staff available through hotlines beyond the school day. Students are expected to log on to Google Classroom and Zoom daily for instruction and to access assignments. Attendance will be monitored and recorded, and assignments will be graded. And then finally, parents are asked to support their student by working closely with teachers, to monitor student learning through family portal, and to review communications from teachers and from the principal and school system, and to be sure to ask questions as they arise. Next slide, please. So, as part of our commitment to a robust instructional program in the fall, all of our curriculum guides have been revised to highlight the essential standards for a grade level or a course, as well as the prerequisite knowledge and skills that learners need in order to be successful in each content and in new content. Every content area has developed a plan to target learning loss and to introduce new grade-level content while maximizing instruction and support for our diverse learners. We will assess students in the fall to determine gaps in instruction. Teachers will be doing their own planning on a daily basis, unlike what occurred in the spring. You will recall in the spring, our curriculum supervisors developed units of instruction, we posted them online, and teachers followed those units of instruction, or we passed out hard-copping materials. In the fall, teachers will be doing their own planning. They've had opportunities for professional development and to consider their coursework for the school year. And there will be synchronous and asynchronous instruction. Those are terms that you'll begin to hear more and more. Synchronous, synchronized means everything is together. It's live teacher in a classroom virtually with students. And that will be occurring during the day. And then there will be asynchronous, which is the opposite, where there are opportunities for students to be meeting in small groups with teachers, teachers to be meeting with parents and answering questions, students to be completing assignments, and so forth. And I'll show you some sample schedules, if you haven't looked at them yet, to give you an example of what I'm referring to.
Do you mind if we interrupt to ask a question during, or do you rather wait until you get done?
I'll let you know if I'll answer it later.
Well, someone had asked earlier today, a parent had brought up a situation regarding the synchronous instruction, because that begins, that's like from 10 to, 10 to 12, I'm just going to say, I mean, I'm sure it's going to vary.
A little later than that, but.
Right, but they were just talking about seniors that have dual enrollment with Warwick that, that's conflicting with, you know, that instruction time is conflicting when they would be doing their dual enrollment classes at Warwick.
Sure. So, just as we do when we are live in person, in a, in a traditional setting, guidance counselors are working with students and families to make sure that their schedules are set up to allow for that travel time and that opportunity to go to Warwick. We would continue to do the same thing.
So, you have taken that, or you're aware of that?
We want, we want the dual enrollment program to continue with Warwick, and yes, that, that is being taken into consideration. And if a student or a parent has a particular question about a student's schedule, especially after they receive the schedule, or really even before that, call the school, speak with the guidance counselor, let them know. Hopefully, they've already done that. Let them know what time they're scheduled for that dual enrollment course, and the guidance counselor will adjust their schedule to make that work.
Thank you.
And is that, Dr. Hanlon, is that the best method for any parent who has a question to contact the school or email the principal?
I believe that's the first course of action, yes, to, to call the school. And we have adjusted to a live voice at the end of every phone call now. Whether you're calling the school, or you're calling the central officer, no matter where you're coming, calling, you're going to get, you know, I hope I can say 100% of the time. There may be situations where that's not the case as it was during a traditional setting, but we have made those adjustments now so that parents can easily get their questions answered. Yes. Thanks. So, the next box has to do with the one-to-one laptop device to student ratio. Again, focused on our, with our emphasis on equity through CARES funding, we've been able to move to this one-to-one device to student ratio, and we'll also be able to assist families who are not in a service provider footprint with a hotspot. So, again, to Mrs. Ackley's point, we have been encouraging parents to call the school and let us know what your needs are, whether it be a device or internet connectivity, and we're going to work with you to figure that out. The rest of the boxes basically follow that. We will be using Google Classroom and Zoom as our primary platforms for instruction, but there are numerous other web-based instructional programs that are all listed as an appendix item in the plan. And then, we, as I already said, we will be recording student daily attendance, and we will be returning to our traditional grading policy when we begin in the fall. So, again, unlike the spring. Next slide, please. So, again, you're going to have to look at the plan to be able to see this more carefully, but this will give you an idea, and I'm going to look at my copy a little bit more, more closely so that I can highlight the main areas. This, what you see here on this slide on the left side, their elementary schedule guidance suggestion, suggestions for schools. And on the left side is specifically pre-kindergarten. So, pre-kindergarten, for example, on four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, pre-kindergarten students will be in live classroom instruction with their teacher 80 minutes a day. And then asynchronous, the opposite of that, they'll be working without that whole group live instruction, 30 minutes a day, either to receive additional assistance or to be completing some, some work that's been assigned by the teacher. And then, over the course of the week, there will be 50 minutes per week for synchronous live instruction in art, music, and physical education.
How are they going to do the PE?
Our, our instructional staff have been working on that. I don't have the details of that, Dr. Briggs, if you're on.
That'd be interesting.
Yes, it will be, all of them will be very interesting when you think especially about those special areas. But do you want to, Dr. Briggs, if you're, if you can hear me, do you want to comment any about how that synchronous instruction will occur for the special areas, specifically PE?
Apparently, he can't hear you.
That's all right.
Okay.
You can get, get us an answer later on.
Sure, okay. All right. And then on the right side, you see the kindergarten to grade five schedule guidance. And this is just a little bit more complex, obviously, the older students still see that for English Language Arts and associated with that is guided reading, the amount of time a day, 60 minutes a day for synchronous instruction, again, live with the teacher, and then 45 minutes a day where they are doing other assignments, viewing pre-recorded lessons, and working in smaller groups with their teachers. Mathematics, 40 minutes of synchronous, 35 minutes of asynchronous on a daily basis. Science and social studies will be every other marking term. You'll have one or the other in any given marking period, but again, 20 minutes of synchronous, 10 minutes of asynchronous. You'll see that over the course of the week, elementary students will have a total of 120 minutes for special areas, and there are a number of other special areas listed there besides those three that we talked about with, with the pre-kindergarten students. And then you can see what's happening on Wednesdays, where it's more small group instruction, intervention, and so forth, and teacher, and students having an opportunity to complete some independent work, but still having access to their teachers. So moving to the secondary schedules, the next slide shows the, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot something. On the left hand, this is, this, that pyramid is about how parents can get help, and it applies to all grade levels, it just happens to be on this slide. So the first line of, what we want parents to do is be communicating directly with teachers. Teachers will have office hours, if you will, where there will be times that they're going to be available every day to parents who have questions. And there will also be, as I mentioned before, a hotline where any time between 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., parents, students can call and indicate whether it's an instructional question or a question about technology, and they'll be able to get an immediate answer to their, there will be a live voice on the end of that phone call. And then there are other email opportunities as well. And then 24/7, beginning on the 1st of September, for all grades 1 through 12. Information, as you can see there, assignments, grades, and attendance will be in the parent, parent portal, family portal, posted. So that's true of, of any grade level. So now I'm ready for the next slide. Next slide. Okay, I can try. No, not going to work for me either. Well, I can keep going, and. Okay. Secondary schedules, this is middle school. Again, you can see a little bit more complexity to the schedule guidance that's provided. Most of the synchronous instruction will again be on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, with Wednesdays being mostly asynchronous. You can see that students will begin their school day at 7:45, and there will be multiple things going on during that time, whether it's small group instruction, teachers providing intervention for students, teachers being available to answer parents' questions, parent-student meetings, and so forth, and then the completion of assignments. Then at the middle school level, beginning at 10:15, there are, through the remainder of the day, through 2:05, actually through 1:30, there are five synchronous 30-minute classes where students are interacting directly in their class with their teacher, not in their class, but in their virtual class, with their teacher, and then some students will have a virtual class six. And then again, at the end of the day, reteaching, small group instruction, and opportunities for parents to talk with teachers.
Would they, the teachers be taking role?
Yes.
During this?
Mm-hmm. And that will be especially important, it'll be important all along, but we're, in the, if you recall in the spring, we were working diligently to engage all of our students and to try to locate them, to find them. And by the time the spring semester ended, we were down to less than 10 students who we, we had not been able to locate. This will, by, by having synchronous classes, we will know right away who's in class and who isn't. We'll be able to then deploy those resources to locate students and to see whether they've left the area or whether they need assistance at home and engaging. And then the next slide, Lynn, is high school. So, at the high school level, we made the decision to, to go to a modified semester-based schedule on a temporary basis for the school year. So that for the first semester, students will have four courses, as opposed to seven all year. They'll have four courses. Successful completion of those courses, at the end of the semester, they will be awarded credit. And then four more for the second semester. So students will actually have an opportunity to earn eight credits this year. Counselors are working with students. I know I've gotten the question, so if anyone's watching with this question, well, we only picked seven, how are we going to get those eight? Counselors are working with our students to identify what that, what that eighth class is for the second semester. So, based upon that change in structure, you can see, again, there's the, that students begin their school day at 7:45 with asynchronous instruction, reteaching, small group instruction, followed by four virtual 45-minute classes, and then a fifth virtual class, if applicable, and then the office hours at the end of the day, again. So, next slide, please. So, as, as I So, as, as I already mentioned before, on or before October 1st, we will start to bring back in transition identified students for periods of time back into our school buildings. The students will be identified based upon the need for in-person instruction, and they could be students in CTE, career technology education, special education, English language learners, and other students requiring intervention or other vulnerable populations. One of the groups that I'm particularly concerned about and maybe next in our thinking would be our youngest students, our pre-kindergarten and kindergarten students, recognizing the importance of that foundation. So, any students who, the schools will be working in collaboration with supervisors to identify who those students are who need the face-to-face instruction. Those students would then be, those families would then be contacted by the school, and we would provide transportation for those students who are identified as being eligible for transportation under normal circumstances. Next slide. So, the plan also describes a bit about roles and responsibilities for staff and how during this virtual learning environment, roles and responsibilities are subject to review and revision to best serve the needs of our students. It's also important to note, and I know the council will be particularly interested in this, that we are carefully reviewing vacancies and in some cases, not filling those vacancies during this time through a soft hiring freeze, and we are already implementing that. Specifics related to schedules and responsibilities will be determined by administrators, and then teachers will work, and, and other instructional staff, actually. All staff will be working with their direct supervisors to confirm their work location based upon a number of things, the needs of students, appropriate staffing levels in our buildings, accountability, contact, contact tracing, and the cleaning, the ability to clean our buildings efficiently. But no matter what the location, there will be clear expectations for effective online instruction. Our traditional observation and evaluation model for teachers will be in place, and teachers can expect administrators to regularly participate in their Zoom and Google Classroom sessions while instruction is occurring. And then the last note on here is, again, the importance of professional development. It has been, professional development has been a focus since the inception of the closure last spring with hundreds of teachers prof, sorry, participating in professional development over the course of the summer. I believe it was 800 and some, the last number I knew. And will continue to provide opportunities throughout this time period. This is only a listing, or the, the, the main part of the document is, only provides a listing, but again, there is an appendix area where there's a full listing of all of the professional development that's been offered and will continue to be offered. Next slide, please. The last area that we touch on in the area of the plan that deals with instruction is athletics. I know that everybody is very concerned about athletics with many strong opinions about athletics. But the, the Maryland Public Secondary Schools Athletic Association has officially postponed fall and winter sports, and we're going to continue to work with that organization. Mr. Ashby, who is our athletic supervisor, is a very respected member of that organization, and he is working very closely with the organization to plan for spring and what we might be able to do in condensed sports season, hopefully during that time. And then we're going to continue to work on how we might be able to work with students on a very, work with our athletes on a very limited basis in the fall and winter with some types of conditioning and so forth, like we did this summer. In terms of co-curricular activities, I think everybody is probably aware of the fact that the Tournament of Bands competition and halftime shows also have been postponed. Our band directors, as well as our other fine arts instructors, are working to offer creative virtual options. And the same is true for extracurricular activities and after-school programs. We recognize the importance of those opportunities for students to complement what's happening in the classroom, and so we are working very hard to come up with some creative after-school programming and extracurricular activities, ways, for example, that the student government can meet. That's what comes to mind first, but we will be, we are working on that, in that area as well. Next slide. So, the next area of the plan, as I mentioned, is Student and Family Services and their planning for how we will continue to support our families. That's very critically important. Our Student and Family Services team has developed some very specific details on how to support, first of all, our families in transition, that's our homeless population, as well as to support the social and emotional needs of our students. As you know, we have homeschool liaisons, pupil personnel workers, social workers, and guidance counselors in that area, that, that division of the organization, and they will continue to work in partnership with our community agencies to make sure that students are supported through a host of services and activities, and those are listed in detail in the plan. But that's, that is a very important part of our recovery for the 2021 school year. The plan also includes information on enrollment and attendance and safe transportation. And then finally, of great importance to everyone, I know, is that the, the recovery planning also includes health care protocols. Our nurses' suites have all been configured to now have two separate identified areas for students with and without COVID-related concerns, and our nurses will be working on-site each day in school buildings to respond to questions and address health concerns of students and staff who are in the buildings. All health care-related matters, we're working collaboratively with our health department, and as I said earlier, looking forward to some further guidance and metrics from the Maryland Department of Health. So, if you'll go to the next slide, and I know you're not going to be able to see this, but this is an important flow chart that is in the plan, and it is the Decision Aid that is, was created by the Maryland Department of Health in conjunction or in collaboration with the Maryland Department, State Department of Education. And what this does is it outlines screening and response protocols for laboratory-confirmed COVID-19 cases and people with, persons with COVID-19-like illnesses in school. So, I know our Student and Family Services and our nurses are all very familiar with this flow chart, and we will be following that created by those experts. The next slide, please. So, business and operations has also been very hard at work to ensure a safe environment, including the use of personal protective equipment, including physical distancing and the requirement that anyone in our school buildings will be required to wear masks. And we're going to continue with meal distribution, and plans will be further developed as additional guidelines are received from USDA and MSDE on what, if any, of those waivers include as we begin the fall. And then, of course, we are cleaning our buildings on a regular basis, and we'll be doing so when students are in our building and when staff are in our building, cleaning high-touch areas and cleaning the buildings each night, if not in between times when students are in particular areas of the building. Next slide, please. So, the next section of the plan is communications, and for us, it's communications and community outreach, and we're doing that in a number of ways as we have done, and will be continuing to communicate, communicate our plan in this way, through the media and phone messages, through PAC-14, school messages, Facebook, and then we are continuing to work in collaboration with a number, multiple, community organizations in supporting the plan, including our faith-based partners, business leaders, local and state government officials and agencies, higher education, health experts, businesses, I said that already, advocacy organizations such as the Wycomico NAACP, the Greater Salisbury Committee, the United Way, Community Foundation, just a number, the Chamber of Commerce. We are in regular calls and meetings with all of those organizations, especially those advocacy organizations, and the Education Foundation. We consider that to be a very important part of our work. And, almost done? Next slide. So, the last part, or the last section of the plan, before you get to the appendix areas, is a part of the plan that briefly describes our future plans towards full reopening of our school. So, as, as you know, we will beginning, be beginning on September the 8th for all students in a fully virtual mode. And again, that's, we hope, is the worst-case scenario for the full semester. We'll be bringing back in students. We still hold out hope that we will be back in school sooner rather than later. On the new school year registration, which we had deployed when we thought we were probably going in a hybrid model, the vast majority of families indicating that they would like to see a hybrid model chose the schedule, having their students in school two days every week rather than every other week. So, we have been and we will continue to be fully developing that model in anticipation of returning to our buildings. Any reopening plan will continue to offer a virtual option for parents, and that includes a future regional virtual school that is being examined by ESMEC, the Eastern Shore of Maryland Educational Consortium, that we are working through this semester as the nine superintendents on the Eastern Shore to develop for piloting in the second semester. So, that is the end of, if you go to one more slide, we'll see if this works. So, click on, Lynn, click on where it says the full plan. And that's not working. So, I will just tell you that the full plan, oh, it looks like it's thinking, so maybe it'll pop in, but I'll, to save time, I'll, I'll just tell you about it. The full plan is posted. Hmm? Oh, it did? Well, I don't see it. No.
Are you talking about from your website?
Yes.
Yeah, I've been using that.
Okay, great.
It's very effective.
Yeah. So, it is posted under the recovery plan on our homepage of our website. You click on it, you will come to a flipbook, which is very well organized, beginning with a table of contents for parents to find what they're looking for. There is a page immediately, I believe, after the table of contents with definitions and acronyms that will be helpful, because we know we're very guilty of using acronyms as parents and others go through the plan. And then you'll see in gray boxes throughout the plan itself where we have addressed each one of those 13 requirements that MSDE had required. So, we've identified where those requirements were met throughout the plan. And then, pretty much what you've seen me go through today, you'll find in the plan as well as, there you go. You'll, and if you click on the arrow, Lynn, on the side of the page, yep, you'll, you'll see that it, it is a book format, and it takes you through that. It's a little slow on the, on the internet, but anyway. And then the end is our some, some very valuable appendix areas where we list the full professional development opportunities, those web-based instructional programs, some resources for mental health, and I'm trying to remember, some teleconferencing guidelines for staff and parents. There's one more, and I can't come up with it off the top of my head, but I hope, if you have not already, I hope that you will go to the plan itself, because as I indicated when I started, that is hundreds and hundreds of hours of work and collaborating with stakeholders to develop what we believe is the safest, most consistent plan for our students. So, if you have other questions that you didn't get a chance to answer, ask.
I guess I've got a.
Which hallway?
You know, I've heard concerns from teachers about going back into the classroom. What happens if a teacher's called back and they say, "We're not going to go"?
Well, teachers are, are being required to commit to where they're teaching, so they may teach from an alternative location. So, if they have an underlying health condition, for example, they can teach from home, but that doesn't mean we won't be in their classrooms. We need to know where they are for contact tracing and, and a lot of other reasons, but, so those particular teachers will be able to teach from home.
Some teachers will.
Yes.
They don't have underlying reasons, and they just say, "Well, I'm not coming back".
Right, and some, some teachers want to come into the building.
I know they do. Some teachers do, some teachers don't.
Right.
What happens to the ones that says, "No, I'm not coming back"?
Then they will teach from home. And again, we.
So, you allow them to teach from home?
Yes. In collaboration with their administrators, so again, so that they're committing to where they are, and we know where they are.
Your communications or your attempted communications with Dr. Briggs, I think that's what you're going to see all year long. I think this is not going to work real well. Anyway, but look, you guys have, have had a task to try to get through this, and I don't envy you any for what you've all had to do.
As I said, it's, it's, you know, we're never, there's so, such strong opinions, and, and as a parent rightly pointed out to me, it's dealing with their children. So, I understand that, but.
The other thing, when you say the parents helping their children, I mean, I remember when we were talking about how you had to get pizzas to get their parents to school to even talk about their kids' education. I don't know how you're going to get them to be helping them, not everybody, you know, that's, that's going to be some, some parents.
Right. We're, we're very hopeful that they will, that, that they will be able to support their students. We have staff that will also be working with them to make sure that they're engaged, but.
Yeah, I mean, we start.
Any more questions on reopening? Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say that this was not an easy decision for the board, obviously. I mean, we began talking about this in June, in work sessions, and talking to each other on the phone, asking everybody, we saw, "What would you do? What would you do?". And at, at the end of the day, it became clear that not only the safest way was to do it virtually, but the smartest way, and by smartest, I mean, if we got started and we, even with the hybrid, we sent half the kids to school, and there's a positive case, and it starts spreading, which is what we've seen in North Carolina and Georgia, then Donna and her team have got to go back and revamp and then go to virtual, so you've lost time. I mean, it, it's, it's a cliche, but this is as good as it gets right now until we know where we're going to be. We at least start virtually, it's safe, and then we can press forward into the fall and see what happens with the virus. But the other point I was going to make is that I heard a lot of comments from parents, and rightfully so, the spring was not what you had hoped for. But we got notice the schools were being closed on a Thursday at 5:00, and, you know, on Friday was the last day, and then Dr. Hanlon and her team has to put something together, which was phenomenal, given the time, and it wasn't anybody's fault. I mean, the virus just jumped on us. But forget about the spring, if you're watching on PAC-14 and you're a parent, forget about that. That was what we had to do in order to get through the year. What we have now is a very, very detailed, robust is the word Dr. Hanlon uses, virtual learning, and there's going to be a lot of accountability for these teachers. A supervisor will be able to go right into the Zoom classroom, observe the teacher, observe what's going on. It's going to have a lot of checkpoints where we'll know what folks are doing. So, it, it's going to be, it's going to be okay, and it's not going to be easy for the parents. I get it. Parents are working, I, I get all that, but this is the best solution we have, I think.
And I have said that, you know, we always want our administrators to be instructional leaders. We want them to be in classrooms, providing feedback and so forth to teachers, but often they are distracted by other things like discipline. We're not going to be dealing with that. Right now, we hope. So, what an opportunity to really be instructional leaders.
Speaking of parents working, is there going to be some kind of an option? I saw up there where some of the teachers, you know, calls could be late. Is there going to be an option up there where they can do Saturdays or Sundays or nights or anything?
Where the teachers can?
No, the parents can, or work with.
The ones that have to work.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we, I will be honest with you, we have talked about recording classes to give parents that opportunity. We haven't come to a decision yet, because we really want that interaction in a classroom setting with all students and the teacher, but I'm not, I haven't made a definitive decision on that. I know that that's something that would be helpful to many parents, to have that. We also have the legal aspects of recording a class, so we would need to work with legal counsel, and I, I think that there are some school systems who are doing that, who are actually developing waivers for allowing classrooms to be recorded, classes to be recorded. So, we're still deliberating. So we're still deliberating that.
Mr. Cannon?
Yeah, I agree with Joe. It's a monumental task. And what you've accomplished is very, very fantastic here. What, I have a few questions. One of them is, what do you do when you have a family who had constantly, you know, the parents are working and the child went to school? What happens now when that child has to stay home? I mean, do you have stories? Do you have examples? Or has there been a solution found for that type of an issue? Because there has to be a lot of people involved in that.
Well, I know that there are families out there struggling with that now. And I definitely understand that challenge of trying to figure out whether they, you know, I've heard of families coming together in learning pods where-
Right.
They're sharing the responsibility on a daily basis of monitoring what's happening with their children or they're engaging with childcare. I will tell you that we're also working with some other community leaders to look at some possibilities. I don't want to get anybody's hopes up because it would also be very involved, but looking at some childcare possibilities, not in the schools, but in the community, where other organizations are assisting in that way. Because that's a very real challenge.
I would think so. The other thing, question I had was, with the Wednesdays being asynchronous, right?
Yes.
And then, yeah, and then the 7:45 to 10:10, same thing. I always thought the virtual was just going to be, hey, it's 100% virtual. You're going to be interacting constantly with breaks. Why was it decided that Wednesday, one day out of five days, was going to be totally asynchronous without any real back-and-forth education?
And there will be. There will be that back and forth. That's, so asynchronous doesn't just mean that a student is working independently on their own without any support.
Right.
So it provides an opportunity for other small group instruction, intervention with students. And again, like I said, for the teacher to be interacting with the parents if parents have questions.
Maybe an easier question would be on that 7:45. What does the child do from 7:45 to 10:10?
There are, there's a bulleted list there.
There's a bulleted list, but I'm wondering, you know, it says researching teacher office hour, small group. But what, honestly, you know, if I'm a kid and I get up at 7:45 and I go online, I guess, right?
Yep.
Where does it all start? What world do I go to? How does it all begin?
So it will begin with whatever the teacher has organized with his or her class.
So their first contact is going to be with a specific teacher at 7:45?
Not as a whole class, but on a daily basis, maybe with the exception of the very first day of school. And so that's a good point that you raise.
Right.
So thank you. But after things get rolling, students will have assignments to complete. They'll know that they need to watch certain pre-recorded lessons. They'll know that they're going to be working in a smaller group with an instructional assistant. They'll know what they're going to be doing during those time periods.
So will there kind of like be, I don't know, this could be old school. Would there be kind of like a homeroom? I don't know if they still have anymore.
We don't. I actually thought about whether-
So when they first sign on, do they get the instructions for the day, for that Wednesday? They get a full load of exactly what the options are?
They will know because of Tuesday. They will know what they're doing on Wednesday because of, yeah, what's been-
So as a parent with children in the school system, let me tell you, what I tell my kids, we're just going to have to wait and see.
Your what?
We're just going to have to wait and see how it all goes out, right? I mean, it's not going to be perfect.
It is. And, you know, I said in the beginning that this is a living document. I don't know if I used those exact words, but it's finalized and it's online. We're going to, you know, we want to hear what's working and what's not working. And then we will continue to tweak the plan based upon what's in the best interest of our students. We know that it has to be better than spring. I believe it is better than spring.
Yes.
But I'm sure that it will continue to evolve.
Yeah, because we had a large group in here earlier. It was really heart-wrenching to hear the students and some of the friends.
The seniors.
Yeah, talking about how, yeah, seniors talking about how it's really, you know, everybody's thought about the educational processes, but I don't think, you know, the social skills and the interaction, I think, you just have to work with what you have, I understand. But not till you heard that did you realize how compromising it's been.
I mean, that's, that was a big piece of what we agonized over as a board. If you were a junior last spring and you played a spring sport and plus social with your friends.
Yeah, right.
You missed that, now you're going to miss fall. It, I mean, we want, we want everybody back at school, that's for sure.
Yeah.
And I get the pain because I had kids that went through the system. And I can't imagine what it would have been like if they missed their senior years. But it was safety and then we'll just have to move forward and see how it goes.
And I think that's the key, I think, is what was stressed in your initial meeting, your Zoom meeting, which I hadn't looked at that perspective. But most people think, "Oh, you're closing the school because you're so worried about health." But I think you stressed it earlier, Jean, it isn't that. It's that you get them in, one teacher gets, you know, gets an infection, not even from school, but anywhere.
Right.
All of a sudden, you're right, you'd have to, you'd have to turn everything upside down and put them all back in their homes.
And in our case, I mean, Dr. Hanlon, I think I'm right, but it could be a student at one school, it's a high school, but they're also on the bus with a middle school student. So it could be just like that. And just like UNC shut down after one week and Georgia's got 900 people on quarantine after one week of public school in one area. So, I mean, we, the time wasted and then we really wouldn't get the education that Dr. Hanlon's team has put out there. It was agony, believe me.
I only have one more question. Private schools. How do you see private schools coming into play here? Because is it, is it true that some of the funding that's coming down at the local level is being administered through the Wycomico County Board of Education even to the private schools? Is that correct?
Yes, they received a portion, well, they receive a portion. They can work with us on our Title I funding. But most recently, they received a portion of our CARES funding.
Okay.
A percentage of that. So yes, they worked through us to order whatever it was that they were choosing to spend that money on.
And I read where some of the, some, a particular county, it might have been Anarundel, was actually implementing some type of oversight on the private schools. I thought that was a huge overstep. But they were sort of, you know, having them fill out their plan for what they were going to do for the year, almost like demanding from a county perspective what they were going to do, similar to what you had presented.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't ask for their plans, obviously, but we needed to know how they wanted to spend their funds so that we could order.
How are the private schools being accountable for their teaching processes over the fall?
By their own boards of directors.
Do they have to send that information to the state, Board of Education or any of that?
No.
Okay.
I thought there was some oversight.
Okay. Exactly.
So, I mean, I, it is very difficult for parents and children to go through this. And it's a really unfortunate circumstance with public health. So I applaud you for all the work you put into coming up with this plan. One of the things that we, that we heard today during public comments from teachers, from students, parents-
Can you hear?
Was they were unable to-
Can you bring that down? You're muffled.
I think muffled, the more I put it close to me, the more muffled I get.
No, your mask. Your mask is muffling what you're saying.
Okay.
Bring it down while you're talking.
Is that better?
A lot better.
My glasses are full of dust. So, so anyway, so I applaud you for putting this all together. And what we had heard from in public comments was that there were a lot of questions. And I feel like they even gave us copies of their questions, rather than go through all those with you. I see on page 31, the staff that you have for the recovery work groups. Was that who you selected to come up with your plan?
They didn't actually write the plan, but they were part of deliberating, you know, the hybrid model and so forth.
So like your medical expert, that was, you had said that you had engaged medical, medical in the medical professions in the community, that was your-
Yes.
Dr. Hornstein was your medical expert?
Yes.
Ms. Smoke was your legal transportation?
Mr. Smoke would have-
Mr. Smoke would be transportation, yep.
Were you able to engage any other parents or stakeholders or?
There's parents on there, right?
There's parents on there and they were, they are, in some cases, they might have dual roles.
Yeah, I see Mr. Magda.
Yeah, in fact, Lynn Hornstein is a parent.
Yeah.
So there may be some overlap. And in order to keep the groups a manageable size, they did that on purpose, making, having dual roles if they could.
So if those, if those students, parents, teachers have questions, they can contact their rep, their person, their, if a parent has a question, Mr. Magaki or Dr. Hornstein can answer.
I would say that they're probably better off asking us about the plan because they didn't actually write the plan. They had input early on.
Okay. And, you know, one of the things that came up with transportation today was the school bus and how that was, how that was going to be funded since it is a line item in your budget. And were those funds going to be transferred somewhere else to support, to another support or?
We will still be utilizing some transportation to transport students. And we are determining now what those routes might look like and with social distancing, how we can assign those routes with contractors. And honestly, quite honestly, we're balancing that with what does a contract look like. We have a contract, but what, what will the actual agreement? How will that play out with bus contractors? We don't want any bus contractor to, to lose their livelihood to not be able to pay for their bus, for example. That, that's, we're going to make sure that doesn't happen. But there has to be a balance of using taxpayer dollars responsibly and also utilizing our bus drivers as much as we can in other ways. Might be not just transporting students. We've talked about the possibility of transporting meals into certain areas of the community. We've looked but found that it isn't as efficient to use hotspots on buses. That doesn't really help us much because it's really only a couple of families that would help. But that's certainly something that we could revisit if we felt. So we are, we are looking not just at bus drivers, but we are looking at every individual staff position and repurposing the job or looking for ways to keep people solvent while using taxpayer dollars efficiently and prudently.
Okay. Well, if there's anything that I can do to help get information out to the community, I'd be more than happy to, and I'm sure everyone at the table feels the same. So thank you.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Right. Are there any more council comments? Mr. Hastings?
There's usually a big kickoff for all of the teachers, educators. Is there going to be any kind of virtual version of that or anything, like any kind of rallying moment? Or is it just going to, how's it going to work out?
Well, my plan at this point, my plan at this point is to rally at every school's faculty meeting. I'm going to make a personal appearance at every school's virtually faculty meeting.
And there'll be a virtual kickoff for new teachers, right?
And there is a virtual kickoff for new teachers, right. And, yeah, so it is quite different. And I wish we could do that because when you think about where we were a year ago with Ron Clark coming, it was so incredible. And who would have ever thought we'd be here a year later?
Yeah. Ms. Purnell, I think you want to make a comment, but we don't typically allow public comments. But they're going to be done in just a minute and you can talk with them out in the hallway. We've got to go into closed session. Will that work?
It'll work for me. It's still my same question I asked regardless of this board.
Yeah. Is there, are there any more questions?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
I was going to keep quiet, but you mentioned about the school bus contractors that you're going to use to cut their tax dollars wisely. What does that mean?
I don't know yet, Mr. Davis. We're, we are, we are examining that again to make sure, I can't, I'll repeat myself. We will make sure that bus drivers continue to be solvent.
And I don't think the comment that we'll use taxpayers' dollars wisely applies just to transportation. We're going to take a look at everything.
Correct.
And the board's looking at that now because there's going to be savings from utilities, et cetera. But you still have to run the AC in the schools to avoid mold, et cetera. So it's, we're stewards of taxpayers' money, big money on the school board. And we're not irresponsible and we're not turning a deaf ear to that. So it's not just, to your point, Mr. Davis, we're not just looking at transportation. We're going to be looking at everything to see, to make the budget balance and to make sure we spend the money responsibly.
Absolutely. Any more comments? Mr. Hastings, one more.
Just adding to, Ms. Purnell's question earlier was dealing with broadband and/or the general expansion. I think you did mention that you tried going to work with maybe get some hotspots to different families or anything like that. I think, is there anything that you want to say publicly as far as that? There's not really much you can do about last mile broadband expansion, but there are a lot of folks in this county and around who don't have access. Anything you want to say to that point?
Right, thank you. Yeah, we're going to work with every individual family who isn't connected and either provide a hotspot. We have been able to purchase, I don't remember how many hundreds. I'm looking at my staff who's online, but I don't know if they can hear me. Can you hear me? Micah? Can you hear him?
Put your microphone down.
Can't hear him.
He said over a thousand at this point.
Is that hotspot?
Hotspot.
How about laptops, same, about the same?
Oh, about 8,000.
I was going to say, I read 8,000.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Was that all that done with CARES money?
Yes.
Yes.
CARES money, GIRS money, which is the Governor's Relief Fund. There's a number of funding sources where we've been able to piece that together. And so, Micah, just nod because they couldn't hear you. Did you say a thousand, about a thousand hotspots? Okay, yeah. So that will be very, very helpful. And also, you're probably aware, I think Laura sent this to you maybe, that there's an initiative through the Office of Rural Broadband-
Right.
-for local jurisdictions, meaning counties, to apply for grants to enhance rural broadband in the area. So we'd be glad to assist you in that area because certainly that will benefit us as well. So.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings. Those were good questions. And, Mr. Holloway, did you have one more question?
No.
You got to answer it anymore? Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Really appreciate you being here.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Purnell. Need a motion to go into closed session.
Booming.
Thank you, guys.